Bringing council meeting to order. Worthington City Council Regular Meeting, 5:30 PM, Monday, December 11, 2023, City Hall Council Chambers. If I could have everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to welcome everybody tonight. Have a full agenda. We do have an addition or an addendum, which is H. 1.1. It is a City Council Business Engineering Memo, Public Hearing on Third and Fourth Avenue Street Reconstruction. With that, do I have a motion to?
To approve the agenda with the addition.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. So we'll go on to the case item, the public hearing, Third and Fourth Avenue Street Reconstruction.
Morning, everybody. Travis Winter from?
Wait, hold, hold, hold. We have to open the hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to open it and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Now testimony.
Morning, everyone. Travis Winter from Bolton and Mink here is here to do the presentation of public hearing, and he's going to go through all the details and preliminary design work.
Thank you, GU. Mayor, Council.
Mindy's.
All right. So, per your request, a feasibility study was prepared for the improvements of four blocks of your downtown area on Third and Fourth Avenue. So this is the preliminary improvement hearing. This is the first of two hearings required by law under statute 429. This will outline the project's scope and impacts and discuss the proposed assessments as well. We'll, it'll have the opportunity for the public to give input and have discussion on it. Changes can be made incorporated into the plan set, which would be the next step of the process. So the map, kind of hard to see on the screen, but the feasibility report included this location map that shows where it's at in the downtown area. It is on Third and Fourth Avenue between Ninth Street and Eleventh Street. So objectives of the project, improve surface conditions, reduce inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer system, and increase sewer capacity, as well as reducing or increasing water system capacity and reliability, replace deteriorating infrastructure, which in turn will reduce maintenance and increase reliability. In addition, those improvements will improve surface drainage and reduce flooding. Long list of proposed improvements. Essentially, it's the entire roadway corridor, including street, curb and gutter, sidewalk from building face to building face. Primarily, there are buildings on both sides, with the exception of the government center block, which has buildings on one side and then some green space or parking on the other side of that. We also went through and detailed out some aesthetic improvements, bump outs at the intersections, colored concrete in the boulevards versus on Tenth Street when that project was done that had some brick pavers. Staff preferences to switch to colored concrete versus the brick to reduce maintenance. Also proposed was some colored concrete at the crosswalk locations. We included decorative street lighting and signposts that would match what was done on Tenth. Also proposed were some planter pots, baskets, benches and bike racks, again similar to Tenth. We have a few buildings that have some subsurface parts of their foundation that protrude out into the right-of-way. It was proposed that we would address those during construction, working with the building owners to close those up and remove them. The situation, the concern with those is having sidewalk over the top of a structure that's below could cause, you know, collapse, failure in the, in the future of sidewalks. So we want to eliminate those encroachments into the right-of-way. The storm pipe would be replaced and upsized as appropriate. Sanitary sewer mains and manholes be replaced, as well as the water, water system, including hydrants and valves. We would do all the sanitary and water services as proposed. And then if there was any outside of the right-of-way work that needed to be done or is recommended in conjunction with the efforts inside the right-of-way, we would work with the property owners on those. This map shows where the locations are. One thing to point out is the current street section having parallel parking on one side and diagonal parking on the other side would be perpetuated. We would keep the same street layout as exists out there now. This diagram shows what the cross-section of a street looks like. You have the underground piping that nobody can see. The manholes are just the surface penetrations that show where the sewer and water or sewer and storm sewer lines are at. But yeah, we have, have mainline storm sanitary and water that run through this corridor. Schedule that was proposed. We're at the first bullet point here, which is the public hearing. We would also ask to have authorization for plans and specifications to be prepared. Once those were done, we're anticipating February, we'd go out for bids and then have bid opening and consider award in March. The way this is proposed for phasing with Third and Fourth Avenue being right next to each other and in the downtown neighborhood is we would propose to do Third Avenue in construction season 2024 and Fourth Avenue in construction season 2025. Following all of the construction work, then the assessment hearing would be conducted. Anticipated date for that would be October of 2025. After that, the assessments would be certified to the county. So where we sit now with assessments is we have estimated amounts based on the construction costs that have been estimated. Once the project's done, the actual amounts will be, be calculated and be presented to the property owners prior to the assessment hearing. That assessment hearing requires a mailed notice and mailed notice as well as a published notice to, to all those property owners. Again, anticipated 2025 in the fall, probably October would be the appropriate date for that. If anybody objects to what their proposed assessment is, they have to give notice to City Council at or before the end of that hearing. So per the assessment policy, the city's covering the costs of the center 24 feet of roadway with the assessable portions outside of that. The parking lanes, the curb and gutter sidewalks being attributed to the assessment costs that is, are passed back to the property owners. And the rate is calculated based on a per foot cost. The sanitary sewer services are assessed at 100% per policy. So the way the project estimates broke out, we have a total of $4.748 million. Primarily, that is attributed to the street construction at just under 2.7 million. One other item to note here is this downtown area was originally heated by a steam heat system that the city operated. That has been decommissioned, so a part of this project would be to remove the infrastructure that's in place yet for the steam heat. That was consistent with what was done when Tenth Street was completed. Notable cost estimate or notable items on the cost estimate is the city versus property owner's share of the street costs. City's cost of that, 1.8, with property owners picking up a little under 900,000. The only other assessable portion that the property owners are picking up is the sanitary sewer services, which is 100% theirs at 63,000. So overall, the city's cost is 3.8 and the property owner's 921,000. And that concludes the presentation. I guess I would be up for any questions you may have.
Call for testimony.
Yep, we have any testimony from council? Any testimony from the audience?
Move to close.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to close and a seconded. Any further discussion? Opposed, same sign? Pardon me? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carried.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want action on this now? You want action on the resolution now?
Action's coming here. Yep.
Okay.
So, the street reconstruction improvement was not initiated by petition, therefore a four-fifth vote of the council membership will be required to order to move forward with the improvement. The specific requirement is the resolution ordering improvement may be adopted only by a vote of four-fifths of all members of council. Should council not be in agreement, the project cannot move forward. Steph recommends that council pass the resolution in Exhibit 2 ordering improvement and preparation of plans and specification.
Should be noted that four-fifths when, will require unanimous vote by the four council members here.
I would move to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same sign. Motion's been carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just move on to the consent.
Consent.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. City Council Minute Meeting, Council Minutes, Worthington City Council, Nobles County Commissioners, School Board.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, on to administration.
All right, first item of business is resolutions approving the 2023 tax levies collectible in 2024. On September 11th, council approved a proposed tax levy of $7,739,156 for 2024, which represented an 18% increase in the levy over the 2023 levy. Staff's recommendation to approve the final levy in the amount of $7,256,629, which represents a 10.64% increase over 2023. As shown that in the resolution on Exhibit 1, the levy includes a general purpose tax levy of $6,219,484 and special tax levies of $1,037,145. The special tax levy includes economic development tax abatements of $51,000. Included in Exhibit 2 is a certification of the county taxes voted. And at this point, I will give a short presentation. As you see, the resolution approving the 2023 tax levy is collectible in 2024. The general fund is $3,423,921,000. The memorial auditorium, 215,000. The recreation fund, one of our bigger funds, 1,545,000. Out of that, we have about $392,000 in revenue that's generated from our facilities, which include the Ice Arena, Olson Park Campground, Fairies Park Rentals, the Field House, the movie theater. But then the expenses that come out of there, operating all of those facilities and maintaining the park areas, park areas expenditures are 934,000 out of that, and tree maintenance 175,000. So the majority of that is maintaining our wonderful park system. Economic Development Authority Fund, 119,000. The EDA Fund, 82,000. Improvement Construction Fund, 813,989. That is the street reconstruction fund that had a sizable increase as we're trying to catch up with maintaining our streets. And the aquatic center facility fund of 19,000, that is to offset repair costs from 2022 as we maintain our reserve balance within our aquatic center. We have debt service of 986,000 and the economic development tax abatement of 51,000, which brings us to the total of $7,256,629. And I can tell council that no major deductions were taken from the pre-certification amount. All of this came from increased revenue and operational cost savings through health insurance and, and various things like that. Major items to note, the adjusted tax capacity. This is the value of the real estate in the city of Worthington, and it goes through a number of formulas, so it's not the 11 million dollars in 2023 is not the actual value, but that's what comes down in the adjusted tax capacity. You'll see in 2024, that jumped up to 13,215,000, a 12.4% increase in the adjusted tax capacity from 2023 to 2024. What that resulted in, even though our levy increased 10%, our tax rate dropped almost 1%. And as we have pointed out, the tax rate is the number that actually determines what your property taxes are, not the levy, it's the tax rate. Major impacts on the 2024 budget compared to the current 23 budget, salaries and benefits went up 12%, accounted for 12% of the increase. Debt service was minimal increase. The next one, the Improvement Construction Fund, almost 814,000 as opposed to the 400,000 that has been in the budget for a number of years that had over 100% increase. And the operational expenditures on some of our local option sales tax facilities went up slightly, a little over 2%. This is our debt service analysis. You see where we're at for 2024. What this does not include was the debt service that was approved at the previous meeting with the, with the bond that was the GO bond as part of the improvement construction. So why do taxes vary from year to year? The primary reason is the market value of properties change. And we've seen significant increases in property values over the last several years. City, county, school district budgets and levies change. Voters may approve a referendum. Aid from state may change. Market value of other properties change that shifts taxes from one property to another. Special assessments may have been added to your bill if you recently had a street reconstruction project. Legislature may make changes in the class and of course, federal and state laws may change. So where do our funds come from? And you'll note, this is not just the levy fund. This is all of the funds in our general operational, intergovernment. Four and a half million dollar taxes are about three and a half million, and then reserves, those reserve funds generally come in our equipment replacement that we put money away from for, for a number of years to replace vehicles and equipment. Where do we spend the money? Like most businesses, we are employee personnel driven. About 58% of our expenditures are for personnel and about 22% are for other services and charges and so, we'll look at where the levy has been for the past 10 years. You see, it's, it's jumped around. It's, it's come back down a little bit in the, over the previous couple of years. This is an indication of where the tax rate has been for the last 10 years, and you can see the city tax rate in the far right-hand column has generally been in that low to mid 50% range. The only outlier was in 2022 when it was at 61%, but we're, the, the trends have been positive by keeping that tax rate low. This is the 2023 tax rate comparison that we do distribute to City Council, and it also goes out to the County Board and the, and the school district that shows where Worthington ranks in tax rate comparison with what we consider 18 comparable cities that have a similar population and are generally in the southern portion of this, of this state. Worthington's 2023 tax rate was 55.8%, which put it pretty much in the middle of our comparable cities. The county tax rate of 32.9 was near the bottom of the, of the 19 cities, and the school district tax rate was also near the, near the lower end of that. The total tax rate, the three main taxing entities of 112.2% generally ranks in the lower third of our, what we consider are comparable cities. Full-time equivalent personnel, we're still just under, we're staying at that 116 full-time equivalent personnel. And that concludes that presentation. If there are, if there's anyone from the public that would like to testify or give comment, you're welcome to at this time.
Ted.
I would like to note, because of several comments and phone calls I've received in the past, that just remember, we got told, I got told that we, you know, have property values in asinine marks in this community, and I said, oh, we, the city, don't set that. We don't do that at space, stuff of comparables, through the assessor's office, through sales, all of that. So I just wanted to, on the record, make sure we state that the value of your property is not set by the city. We have no control over that at all, zero.
Well said.
All right, moving on, also included as Exhibit 3 is the Housing and Redevelopment Authority's proposed levy of 186,000, which was the same that was pre-certified by City Council on September 11, 2023. Suggested motion move to adopt resolutions approving the 2023 tax levies collectible
At the 10.64?
Yes.
So move to adopt that resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, next item, Exhibit 4 is a resolution approving all of the separate city fund budgets. Council action is requested on the resolution, move to adopt the resolution approving the 2024 fund budgets for the city of Worthington.
Counsel, motion?
Move to adopt the resolution for the fund budgets for 2024?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, then we have the third reading, the proposed ordinance relating to stormwater utility rates. This is the time and date for the third reading. Complete copy of the ordinance was in the November 13, 2023 council agenda. Council action is requested to give a third reading to the proposed ordinance.
Move to approve third reading.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried.
Next item is resolution designating polling places for election precincts within the city of Worthington. Minnesota statute requires that the city council designate polling places for each precinct. Polling places for the 2024 presidential nominating election, the primary election and the 2024 general election will be as follows. Ward 1, Precinct 1 and 2 at the Lakeside Church. Oh, and also Precinct 3, Ward 1. Precinct 4 and 5 at the American Reformed Church. Ward 2, Precinct 1 at the YMCA. Ward 2, Precinct 2 and 3 at the Nobles County Public Works Building on Diagonal Road, and Ward's, Ward 2, Precincts 4 and 5 at Solid Rock Church. And I have to point out to the council that on Friday, we received a notification from the Nobles County Engineer, Public Works Director, that they no longer want to host the precinct voting at the Nobles County Public Works Building. However, they did not provide us with enough legal notice that it could be changed for the March, it's March, right? Many of the presidential primary in March. So we will have to come back with the, to the council to designate a, another polling place for the?
General election?
For the primary and the general election that will be later in the summer in 2024. But as of the March presidential primary, these are the precinct and polling locations that they will be.
How much time before those, does a decision, a decision need to be made?
We have to give 90 days' notice, plus we then have to, we don't, we haven't determined yet if it's our responsibility or the county's responsibility to notify every voter within those precincts that the polling place has changed.
Did they give a reason as to why they don't want it there anymore?
Yes. Inconvenience.
Okay.
Would that summarize their request?
Move to adopt the resolution, designate polling places.
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Are all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, next we have an application for, for an on-sale beer license at the Panda House. Exhibit 6 is the application for the Panda House, 913 Fourth Avenue. As of January 1st, in a couple of weeks, the new owner of the Panda House will be Key Shawn Grun. License period is January through December of 2024. All the required paperwork, fees and insurance certificates have been received. Council action is requested.
Move to approve.
Second that.
Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
The nominating committee is making the following recommendations for committee appointments to the Cross-Cultural Advisory Committee. Appoint Abibi Abitu to fill the unexpired term of Paul Summers, term to expire in December 31, 2024. Reappoint Scott Barber to a second three-year term, which expires on December, December 2026, and reappoint Edgar Sanchez to a first three-year term to expire on December 31,
Move to approve.
Okay, motion and?
I would second that if we correct the spelling on Summers, just for?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Next item is policies and. Next item is policies and procedures for federal awards administration. Exhibit seven is a formal policy regarding the policies and procedures for federal awards administration. Periodically, the city will apply to receive federal grants. City has a grant application and management policy, which is a general grant policy, but nothing that was specifically for federal grants. Our current auditors recommended that this policy to address single audit purposes, which occur when the city has received $750,000 in federal grants in any particular year. Staff recommends that council approve the policies and procedures for federal awards administration.
In other words, only if we receive $750,000 in federal grants, then they're going to audit it. If not, then they won't audit.
Correct. And we have to, basically, the policy is our standard that we are asking you to adopt, was the standard policy that we followed anyway. We just didn't have it in
For federal.
Formal writing.
I move to approve the policy.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, the next one are some transfer resolutions. This is another item that was brought to our attention by our auditors. Anytime the city needs to do a transfer that is not budgeted, a transfer resolution is required. Following our three transfer resolutions, staff would like council to consider approving. So Exhibit eight is a resolution approving a transfer from the General Fund to the Worthington Regional Hospital Fund for use of American Rescue Plan Act money. During 2021 and 2022, the city Worthington received $1,431,488 in ARPA money. During 2023, it was decided to use $106,583 of this money to offset the costs on the Cecily Extension Development to make the lots more affordable for purchase. ARPA money is located in the General Fund and council action is requested on the resolution to move the money from the General Fund to the Worthington Regional Hospital Fund. Request adoption of the resolution.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, Exhibit nine is a resolution approving the transfer of Sales Tax Fund to the Aquatic Center Fund. Since the city was funding the project ahead of bonding for the project, the Aquatic Center Fund was running a cash deficit and needed additional cash for expenditures. On August 31, 2022, the city created an interfund loan payable from the Aquatic Center Fund to the Sales Tax Fund in the amount of $1,600,000. At the November 13, 2023 council meeting, the council approved sale of bonds with a par value of $4,925,000, well under the total construction cost of the Aquatic Center project. It's since been decided to restructure the 1.6 million interfund loan and treat it as a transfer instead due to the total cost of the project in relation to the bond proceeds. Council action is requested on the resolution to move the money from the Sales Tax Fund to the Aquatic Center Fund.
I move to approve the transfer.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
And the last one, Exhibit 10 is a resolution approving a transfer from the Economic Development Authority to the Worthington Regional Hospital Fund. The hospital fund fronted the cost of this project totaling $612,985, and it was decided to pay back. The hospital fund, as lots were sold, three lots in the Cecily Extension Development were sold on May 26, 2023, and August 24, 2024, in the amount of $121,603.52. Council actions requested on the resolution to move the money from the Economic Development Authority Fund to the Worthington Regional Hospital Fund.
That say August 24, 2023?
That should say 23, yes.
Move to adopt with that correction.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Our auditors will be so pleased with us. Professional Services Agreement Independent Investment Advisory. Administration and finance staff manage cash and investment funds to ensure liquid funds are available to meet operational obligations and maximize the yield on invested reserve funds. Reserve funds are generally invested either in shorter-term certificates of deposit or in treasury bonds that have maturity terms ranging from one year up to five years. Staff have been in discussions with representatives of the Investment and Treasury Management Group at Ellers Public Finance to engage them to provide independent investment advisory services. Ellers services include seeking out the best short and long-term investments based on the current portfolio and the city's investment objectives. Ellers investment advisory fees are based on assets under management with no additional compensation or commission. The annualized rate for less than $5 million under management is 0.25%. The advisory decreases, the advisory fee decreases to a minimum of 0.125% when assets under management exceed $25 million. A copy of their engagement letter and advisory agreement are included as Exhibit 11. The city has $4,971,830 in treasury bonds that are maturing in December. Staff's recommendation is to engage Ellers to provide investment advisory services for those funds noted above. And we have, I didn't add up the total amount we have over the next four or five years, but it is substantially more than $5 million. So our recommendation was, let's see what Ellers comes up with on these two bonds that are maturing this month and check out their, their performance and services.
I would move to approve using Ellers for financial services advice.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Next item is the adoption of the legislative mandated Earn Sick and Save Time policy. Minnesota Legislature passed the Omnibus Jobs and Economic Development Bill that included Senate File 3035 Earn Sick and Save Time. The bill was signed into law by Governor Tim Walz on May 24, 2023, and becomes effective on January 1, 2024. Legislation necessitates amending the city's policy regarding leave of absences. Included as Exhibit 12 is the policy prepared by the city's legal counsel. Council action is requested to approve the Earn Sick and Save Leave policy.
Questions?
I will advise council that our biggest concern, as we waited through this with little guidance from the state, and by little, I mean none, our preloaded sick time that is allowed to be transferred to vacation time, unused sick time, automatically rolls over into vacation time the following year. The only change we had to make was that the employees will now have the option, they can cash that out or cash it out and then buy their vacation time back. So we have resolved the major concern that we had regarding our, how our current leave of absence time was set up, both sick leave and vacation time. So we
From my understanding of ESSD, it's just another reason to be gone and not necessarily added time to be gone?
That is correct, yes.
It's just a reason.
Yes. If you, if you read through the policy, the, the reasons that you can be away from work and use your Earn Sick and Save time are very flexible.
I move to approve the mandated ESSD policy.
We have a motion. Second.
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Picking this Law Enforcement Center amended lease agreement back up from a few weeks back. The Law Enforcement Center Joint Powers Committee reviewed the lease and recommends amending changes to the city's rent and capital reimbursement payments. Annual rent shall be $1 due and payable on about January 1 of each year. Capital reimbursement payments of $197,500 from the city to Nobles County shall be payable on or about January 1 of each year. What was in question was what should the interest rate be charged on the outstanding principal? I believe the current lease calls for the interest rate to be 2.433%. They had, the county board had originally requested that the interest rate be set using the Minnesota Association of Governments Investing for Counties or Magic Fund. The current seven-day yield, whatever that would be on July 1 of the given year, would set the interest rate for the following, beginning the following year. They did come back and advise that they would accept the applicable federal rates annual long-term rate. And again, on December 1, that was at 5.03%. For comparison, on December 1, the federal prime rate was 8.50%. And 12-month treasury bills are five point, were 5.29% on December 1. City's current principal balance for capital improvements at the Prairie Justice Center is $1,196,269. Copy of the lease was, of the previous lease was included. So the request from Nobles County is to select either the Minnesota Association of Governments Investing for Counties current seven-day yield or the applicable federal rate annual long-term as the index to set the annual simple interest rate.
Probably not much difference between the two.
They wanted it previously set at the rate at July 1.
They, so they would
Now we're going to do it to December 1?
No, no. I just, the rates I put in there on December 1 were just
Comparison.
To demonstrate to you what the rates were on that on December 1. So on July 1 of 2024, whatever the rate is, that would set the interest for January 1 of 2025 for that one year.
Were you on this committee? Was Elena?
Yeah, but we were never involved in that
We got told.
In that discussion.
We got brought up in the fact that in our joint powers of the Prairie Justice Center, they wanted to change the rate. But all of this was presented by them. We had no communications whatsoever as to that other than when we said we, the magic rate is a thing not used by hardly anybody. And it was even agreed upon, if you remember, by Rebecca Kurtz, who was here from
She didn't know what that was.
Ellers and Associates, I mean she
Are you guys comfortable with the applicable federal rates annual long-term? Is that more of a non
I'd never heard of that one either.
What would be, what would be one we would have heard of? Or those in finance would have heard of?
T-bills. I don't
Shouldn't it be something that's, like, we could look it up and know that that's the
And all of these are readily available. I was able to look up all of those, you know, in a matter of minutes to get
Look up the magic
Yes.
Rate and then, I mean, did it seem to be fairly level, fluctuate a lot?
I did not investigate enough to see if they're, what the
Sure.
Year, five-year was
I'm at least fine with the, the federal rate. It's no different than what people are often using. I mean, comparison of mileage and stuff from the federal government. Annually, they throw out a rate for those things.
This does get revisited each year then.
Yep.
Yes.
For at least it's based on a federal term opposed to the Minnesota Investing Group for the counties.
Because that would change, wouldn't it? Because they would be each time, this would be
Yeah, I mean, they would all, they all may be changing on a daily basis, on a monthly basis. I think, I don't know how long federal prime rate's been at 8.5, but it, they haven't changed it in, in some time, but
Counsel? I'll move to go with the federal long-term rate.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and seconded. Do we have a further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Public safety.
Mayor, counsel. Administration is requesting the reinstatement of the deputy chief position within the police department. Deputy chief position would replace the captain position and better represents the responsibilities of the individual that serves as the second-in-command of the Worthington Police Department. Deputy chief is an exempt grade seven. In accordance with the City Compensation Administration Plan, the position guidelines are included as Exhibit 1. Council action is requested to approve the deputy chief position guidelines within the city's position classification plan.
What was the chief's position graded at? Was it exempt?
Deputy chief?
No. The captain, excuse me.
Captain was E5.
When did we go to, go from initially from the deputy chief before to the captain?
There's a long history of bouncing this position around. The deputy chief was in place from around 2000 to 2005.
The reason back then to go to captain instead of
Originally, they changed from captain because the captain position was a one-person union. So they, they switched it initially to an administrative sergeant position so that the unions could be combined. And then eventually, the administrative sergeant position was changed to the deputy chief position. Again, in large part due to union issues. The city, city council didn't believe that that position should be a union position. And when it was changed to deputy chief, they were removed from a union. And when it was changed to deputy chief, they were removed from a union.
Counsel, any questions?
Does this give any other duties or any, does it allow for any more duties to be placed upon? I mean, the grade has difference. So what's reflective in the grade change with the job duties?
The, the captain position was actually functioning as a deputy chief for many years. What changes went into the job description for the most part are the minimum requirements. It is now changed to a four-year degree. And the, the years of service went from three to five as a supervisor.
As we, as we looked at it, the, the second-in-command of, how many people under direction? 30?
Yeah.
Being dispatch? Is not someone with a three years of experience in law enforcement or five years is not going to be qualified. And this, these types of, these positions are really moving towards the expectation that the, the individual have a advanced degree from a, from the two-year minimum law enforcement degree. So that, those were two of the major changes that, and the responsibility of being in charge in the entire police department and dispatch office in the absence of the chief.
Move to approve the deputy chief position guidelines and the classification.
Okay, we have a motion unseconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Public Works?
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Number one is the 24 YMCA Youth Recreation Programs Agreement. The city of Worthington contracts with the Worthington YMCA to promote, manage, and operate the city's summer youth recreation programs for its residents. The Park Advisory Board at their November 29th, 2023 meeting unanimously approved a motion to enter into the agreement with the YMCA for 2024. Attached in your packet as Exhibit 1 is the agreement commencing on January 1st, 2024 and terminating on December 31st. The management fee paid by the city of Worthington, the YMCA for 2024 is $64,500. A 5% increase over 2023 to be paid in 12 monthly installments. I will tell you that is less than what we had budgeted that you just approved tonight. So it's a little bit less than what we had in there. Counsel action is requested to approve the 2024 YMCA agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion unseconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
The second one is to set the Water World, Water World Aquatic Center 2024 fees. The city of Worthington contracts with the YMCA to manage our new Water World Aquatic Center. The fees charged for this facility will be recommended to staff by the YMCA and annually set by you guys, Worthington City Council. The Park Advisory Board, again, at their 28, November 29th, 2023 meeting, unanimously approved a motion to increase the fees by 3% for all season passes and add some additional rental rates for certain functions. These proposed changes are highlighted in Exhibit 2 in your packet. Counsel action is requested to approve these changes. They're keeping the day fees the same. They're increasing the seasonal passes by 3%. And then they added some birthday party rentals and some larger rentals, stuff like that. And that, and they should, a 10 punch, punch card at a discounted rate, so.
Anything with grandparents, if they were to bring their kids in there?
We talked about that, and that's a really hard one to deal with because the non-swimmers, if you have children that are, well, if they're under five, you have to be within arm's length of them. If they're under 12, due to insurance reasons, if they're under 12, you have to be in the water with them. And so there was some real issues and the, the management was concerned about non-swimmer rates and where do you, you know, grandparents and non-swimming parents. So that's why we did the punch pass, which, which gives you a discounted rate.
Sure, yeah. Well, inside the gates anyways, there's always liability.
Yep, yep. And that's mandated by the YMCA's insurance, that, that portion of it.
Makes sense.
Move to approve the Water World fees. Second.
Okay, motion unseconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Once again, the park user and campground rates. The Park and Recreation Board at their meeting on November 29th reviewed and proposed that there be no change to the 2024 park fees and numerous changes to the 2024 Olson Campground fees as shown in Exhibit 3. Those were the highlighted numbers.
I have a question on the monthly rate. Seems like it's gone up, like, all the other ones went up a dollar, $5. And then the monthly rate went up $200. That seems-
No, it went from, it went from $195 to $200.
The monthly rate?
Not that we-
We-
Oh, the month, yes, the monthly fee did because we were running into a lot of people that were, we're not really a seasonal campground. And we were running into people that were using it as that. And they were taking away spots for people who wanted to come on the weekends. Sometimes they'd only be there for two weeks because it was cheaper. It was the same price to rent it monthly at $500 as it was to, to rent it on the, on the weekly fee. And so they would do that and stay for two and a half weeks. And we had campsites that were setting open. So we, we thought that it's not a seasonal place and we, we did raise it quite a bit. And it still comes out to about $22 a night, I think, if you figure out the monthly fee with our increase.
Twenty-three. Is that electric too included with that monthly?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, that's, yep. Yeah.
You get seasonal workers and stuff like that in and stuff, and they start using the campground. And at $23 a night on a monthly fee, that's very reasonable.
There was one camper out there, they must have been there for, I don't know how many months.
Yeah.
But they would, they'd come and go. They're-
Right.
They'd have their camper there, but no one around for a couple of weeks at a time.
Weeks on end. They'd come and stay. Some of these construction workers, like I said, would be there for two weeks and then gone for two weeks. And, you know, sometimes they'd leave their camper, sometimes they'd pull their camper someplace else. And then we had a site that was reserved. You didn't know when they were coming back and it was set empty. We were getting money, but we weren't get, we only getting 20 some dollars a night. And so we want, or not even that at that time. So we wanted to make sure that we're kind of covering that cost. And our, and our cost for electric and labor and everything has really went up. And we're right in the middle as far as our proposed fees for 24. I did some research and if you get something comparable to what we have, like on Lake Chautauqua or something like that, where there's trails and stuff, we're about right in the middle as far as cost-wise goes. We don't have water and sewer. Some do and they charge more. But we do have 50 amp site service at each, at each electric site, which is a big one now, so. And these, these fees have not been raised since 2022. Stayed the same for 2023.
Move to approve the 24 park user fees and campground rates.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion unseconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
The last one I have for you is bench donations. The Park and Recreation Advisory Committee has received four requests to place benches in the city parks and along city trails. The requests are as follows. Krista Toronas to place a bench in Chautauqua Park and a bench in Cherry Point Park in memory of Leo and Mary Olandic. Nick and Cara Kramer to place a bench along County 35 Trail in memory of Emmett Adrian Gonzalez. And Enrique Oliveras to place a bench on, on the dock in Ludlow Park in memory of Nick Oliveras. The application resolutions accepting the donations of benches are included in your packet. These meet all the requirements set forth in the park donation policy adopted by city council. And the Park and Recreation Advisory Board recommends city council accept the donation. Counsel action is requested to adopt the resolutions, accepting the donation of park benches and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign any necessary agreements.
Move to approve the park bench donations.
Greatfully seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Onto engineering.
For tonight is a sale of a parcel number 31-1103-500. Used for stormwater drainage improvements in the Cherry Point neighborhood. The parcel was purchased in July of 2023 for the improvement of the stormwater drainage system in the Cherry Point. The stormwater utility easement was established on the property. The lot is narrow and the utility easement restricts the development of the lot compared to what it was available prior to the easement. City is responsible for the future maintenance of this lot now that we've purchased it. The city has no future use for the property and is required to maintain the lot in perpetuity. The adjacent property owner is interested in purchasing the lot. The sale of the remnant property to the adjacent landowners is permissible and has been done in the past. The city attorney has, was consulted during the purchase of the lot initially for the city and regarding the future sale to the adjacent property owner. Due to the size of the lot and the new utility easement, which limits the development of the lot, the value of the property is significantly limited. City policy provides for the direct sale and it's property which does not conform to zoning requirements in regard to size, area, or street fringe may be sold to owners of abutting properties without a public sale. Counsel shall establish the manner that property is to be distributed to abutting owners and the sale price and any other terms or conditions found appropriate. The property owner that sold the property was not interested in retaining ownership of the property with utility easement. This leaves only one adjacent property owner abutting the parcel. This owner is interested in the purchase of the parcel. According to the city attorney, the fees for the property, the sale of the property, if sold for over 100, oh, I'm sorry, for over $600 in value will require a significantly higher cost for a formal closing. It is a recommendation of the city attorney that the value be set at $600 and have the buyer recover, cover the fees associated with the sale and the recording of the deed. Property owner is agreeable to the price and the payment associated with the cost fees. And those fees are estimated to be around $400 by the, by the city attorney. Exhibit 1 shows the location of the parcel at the corner of Betty Avenue and Godfrey Street. The staff recommends that a portion of, of Lot 23, Block 1, Cherry Point Park, parcel number 31-1103-500 be declared surplus property and sold to Scott and Lori Junker, the adjacent property owners. And I did ask our, our Public Works Director, Todd Wietzma, if they had interest in maintaining it or if there's some reason we should retain this. And, and he said, no, they, they have to mow it and take care of the weeds and do everything like that. And he preferred not to have to assign time and, and, and energy in taking care of a lot that adjacent property owner would be willing to purchase and take care of.
Move to declare the lot surplus property and sell it per the case item.
Okay, we have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Community Development.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number one here is a, an amendment to the city's signed permit fees. City Code Chapter 153 regulates signage within the city of Worthington. Any sign regulated by that chapter also requires the issuance of a permit to ensure compliance. Section 32 specifically states that the fee for that permit is set by resolution of the city council. These fees cover staff time to review applications, inspections, and any other expense incurred by the city related to the issuance of signed permits. Current fees are set as follows. $5 per sign face for any sign under 50 square feet and $10 per sign face for any sign over 50 square feet. These fees no longer adequately cover the costs associated with review and inspection of signs. As such, staff is proposing to amend the standard fee to $30 per sign. Then $100 per sign for an off-premise sign, that's essentially a billboard sign. This would be a flat fee per sign regardless of the number of sign faces or the size of the sign. We're just trying to simplify that so that people can actually figure out what the fee is and I don't have to tell them every single time. I did go on and list six other relatively similar-sized cities there. Just so you can see, the permit fees kind of range anywhere from like 15 up to like $50 there. So you can see what's being proposed here is pretty comparable. It's not too much compared to other cities and it's not really on the low end either there. Council's requested to pass the resolution shown in Exhibit 1 amending signed permit fees. And I'd note that resolution would be effective January 1st.
Is this a yearly fee or is this just when they put the sign up?
It's a one-time fee when they get the permit.
Seems a lot more simple. And it could be laid out on a piece of paper and not require you to walk away from your duties to explain it.
Yeah, it's just another step of back and forth to-
Yeah.
Tell them that their permit fee is $5 and-
Yeah. Move to adopt the resolution to change our fees as, as presented.
Okay, we have a motion unseconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, number two, this is acceptance of a 2024 Building Official Training Grant. The city of Worthington has been awarded a grant of up to $65,000 from the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry as part of the 2024 Building Official Training Grant. This grant program assists municipalities with the training and education of new building officials. Eligible expenses include wages, benefits, and training and education. The grant award letter can be seen in Exhibit 2. Staff intends to use this grant to help fund wages for another position in 2024. That position is not created yet and will be subject to council approval. And I would note that that'll not cover all the costs associated with that in 2024. And then it would have to be budgeted each year after that, of course. The term of the grants from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024. Council is asked to consider accepting the 2024 Building Official Training Grant.
So if you only use $60,000 worth of it, you only get 60. So whatever you use of that 65,000?
Yeah, and if we do get another position, we'll use the entire 65.
Once you, the entire personnel costs are going to exceed 65,000 by the time you include all the benefits.
Depending how fast you're gonna hire one.
Right.
If we don't add another position, is that, are those funds usable for something else for current staff?
No.
No, it's only to bring on a new hire.
Okay.
I would move to accept the 2024 Building Official Training Grant.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion unseconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, Council Committee reports. I have nothing.
I have nothing.
The CCAC Committee is working on a cultural competency training. The first cultural competency training for, for city council and the lead building, or building, department leaders in all the departments. The first training will be January 11th. And the second one was February 8th. Am I correct on that, Steve?
I believe so, yes, yes.
So I'm asking, we're looking at two possible times. It's a three-hour training. So from 2:00 to 5:00 or from 3:00 to 6:00. Any specific preferences on the timing of those? Because you are all invited to that.
What were the options again?
2:00 to 5:00 or 3:00 to 6:00.
3:00 to 5:00.
I'd be more reluctant to 3:00 to 5:00.
3:00 to 6:00.
3:00 to 6:00.
3:00 to 6:00.
I'd probably go for 3:00 to 6:00.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Chris?
I'd probably go for 3:00 to 6:00.
3:00 to 6:00.
I can make it work. Right.
Okay. Good info, thank you.
Want to define cultural competency training and what it entails?
The goal is to teach everybody to relate and understand all cultures in the city of Worthington. And cultural competency is definitely an avenue that everybody should partake- should partake of in, uh, in, at some point in their tenure. We do it in the school district quite often. It was, it was recommended, um, through the CCAC committee just to meld the different cultures a little bit more.
And who facilitates the training?
I can't, I don't recall the name of the group off the-
It, it was somebody that has something to do with the Blandin Foundation at one point, but is no longer part of the Blandin Foundation. But that's where they originally began their tenure.
Yeah, like helped to understand their culture and their religions and their dress and their, their, cool. Thank you. Chris, you have anything?
No report.
Okay, Chad?
Um, I had a parks meeting, but we went over everything we had in the parks meeting and resolutions, so, yeah.
Steve?
Okay, so Wednesday, December 20th, we have a work session scheduled. We'll talk about, uh, the ice arena and any other business. We have a couple other business things that we'll probably go through. If council is inclined, uh, and if we can make sure we get all of our business completed by the end of the year, uh, the second regularly council meetings that would be scheduled for December 26th can, uh, may not be necessary. So, if you're, uh, if that's your wishes, uh, we would intend to make sure, anything that needed to be done by the end of the year would be picked up on December 20th, uh, and forego the, uh, council meeting on the day after Christmas if you desire.
That's a good goal.
Yep.
All right. We'll plan that then.
Okay. Move to the-
Second.
Okay, motion unseconded. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.